I'm a student at Harvard.
MIT.
Cal Tech.
Columbia.
Our advantage? Support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocps.net or call 407-317-3200.
All right, if everybody could grab a seat, board members, if you could, and if everybody could please silence your cell phones and pagers, we'll go ahead and get started. I'm going to recognize somebody tonight, and I'd like to ask Mr. Doug Szysinski to please come join us up at the podium to lead us in the moment of silence and the pledge, and after Mr. Szysinski takes us through the moment of silence and pledge, and I'm going to brag on him a little bit, because we didn't know he'd be here tonight, but I'm thrilled he is, because he needs bragging on.
Well, good evening. If everybody would please stand, we're going to have a moment of silence. And now the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you could stay there for a second, Mr. Szysinski. He's here tonight in another capacity, but I just want to share, board members, I don't want to thank Mr. Roach for bringing it to my attention, that Mr. Szysinski, who's our Freedom Middle School principal, has been named Orange County Public Schools Innovative Principal of the Year. Let me tell you a little bit about why he was named that. Mr. Szysinski, who's been the principal at Freedom Middle for two and a half years now, has made significant improvements, including the purchase of three mobile mini laptop labs, two mobile iPad labs, 10 student response systems, and a new computer workstations for his entire staff. Through a partnership with the National Project Lead the Way Grant, OCPS Career and Technology Education, and a Perkins Grant, he was instrumental in creating a new Academy of Engineering Laboratory. He also oversaw the creation of a new Academy of Business Technology Lab, an ESOL Lab for language acquisition, and a MacBook Lab for STEM instruction. He has made it possible for all his students to have access to technology in his schools, and he is currently looking for ways to update all projectors throughout the campus to make sure the school has the most up-to-date technology available. As is obvious, Mr. Szysinski places a large priority on parent and community involvement. He converted his school's printed newsletters to a digitized weekly newsletter for parents and the community, and a digitized newspaper for students. And most recently, he and the school technology coordinator created an app for iOS, Android, and Windows devices, the first personalized school app of its kind in our district. Wow, who says we don't have STEM education? The app allows parents to see what's happening in the school with regard to academics and extracurricular activities. He is also very active with social media and uses Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and a blog to engage families and the community. And Mr. Szysinski, you don't know this yet, but I think we're going to have a school board retreat, and have you come down and teach us all how to tweet, because none of us up here know how to do that. Thank you, Mr. Szysinski, for all you do for us.
Can I say something?
Bill, can I say something? Mr. Roach, did you want to say something too?
Yes, I did. I saw that announcement come out in the Orange Peel and immediately called Doug, he's one of the principals in my district, and I said, "Doug, I want to come down and honor you in front of your faculty," because I was going to speak to the faculty anyway, so Doug scheduled it, and we came in. I want you to know, he stood me up. He stood me up. His faculty was there, he didn't show, and so I asked why, and of course, his wife had a baby. I thought that was a pretty good excuse. How many, Doug, you had? Put your fingers. Four children over there. So I told him that was a good excuse, and I honored him in front of his faculty anyway, but when I found out he was coming, then I said, "Oh, this is a great opportunity, really up the stakes a little bit, and give it to the chairman, and let the chairman do his thing, and I can get on it." But I'll tell you, the greatest compliment I have, I think, at least from my perspective, this is just me, is I think I have a lot of great principals, but I always really secretly gauge them like this. I think, who would I, if I ever went back to the schools, who would I like to work for? And Doug would be on my list. I'd probably go and beg him to hire me if I wanted to go back in schools. He's just that kind of a principal, and when you go into that school, you know that his teachers respect him and love him, and he's just not afraid. He's an ex-Marine, the man's out there, he's just, he's leading his school, but he leads and creates willingness, and I think that's the sign of a fabulous leader. So Doug, congratulations, and you to all your kids and your parents from Freedom Middle School tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. All right, folks, tonight, we're also recognizing student winners of the Orange County Utilities Water Division Calendar Art Contest, and you may have seen us up here a moment ago taking a photograph with these very, very talented young artists. These students from across the district created beautiful artwork for all of Orange County to see, and some of the students' family members, teachers, and principals are also joining us tonight. And parents, I hope you'll mind indulging me this, but could I have all the parents of the students stand up, because I don't think anybody's as talented an artist without a great home, a great head. And, so we can recognize our artists tonight, let me welcome to the podium Ms. Jacqueline W. Torbert, Water Division Manager for Orange County Utilities. Ms. Torbert, welcome.
Good evening to you, Chairman Sublett, and to all of the board members, to Superintendent Jenkins as well, and especially to all the families and the kids that have participated in this art contest. On behalf of Mayor Jacobs and the entire Board of County Commissioners, for so many reasons, this is really important to us, but one of the most important reasons for indulging into, in this contest with our students, is that we had the chance to unite two of the most important resources that we have here in Florida, our kids and the drinking water, quite important. At the beginning of the school year, we issued a challenge to the middle and high school students of Orange County to use their artistic talents and their knowledge about the environment, as well as their commitment to water conservation, to creatively share their ideas on how we can save water in Orange County. I'm here tonight to say that all of the participants in the program met that challenge, and there were a few who went beyond and exceeded that challenge. And what we are celebrating is all those students that provided the artwork for our calendars this year. If time permits, if you don't mind, I would like to share with you the artwork, and share it with the audience as well. Gabriel, I'm not sure if all of the students are here, but if you are here, I'd like you to stand along with your principal and your parents. Go ahead and stand up again. Gabrielle Delgado, Freedom Middle School. That represents the cover of the calendar. Celine Chirani. Please forgive me in the pronunciations. She's from Southwest Middle School. Marian Norris, also from Southwest Middle School. Gianni Concepcion, Freedom Middle School. Isabel Garberino, Bridgewater Middle School. Krista Pina Santana, I'm sorry, from Freedom Middle School. Emmanuel Martinez from Southwest Middle School. Gaviata Rivera from Timber Creek High School. Abdullah, tell me how to say it, Abdullah? A-U-B. He's from Southwest Middle School. He's our August. Natalia Lagretta. From Corner Lake Middle. Congratulations. Celine is October. She is actually a two-time winner, from Southwest Middle School. Sandra Fennis from Freedom Middle School. Atana Arubla from Freedom Middle School. I would just like to say, we thank everyone, all of the kids and their parents, and the principals, for participating in this effort. And finally, I would like to say that we also have partners with this project. We don't do this alone. We had the Orlando Federal Credit Union to participate in providing prizes to the students and to the teachers, and PepsiCo Beverage Company, who also supported this project. And I appreciate you guys for recognizing these students, for their talents, and for the students being so committed to water conservation in Orange County.
Ms. Torbert, thank you for everything you and the county do, and the Utilities Department to sponsor this contest. It means a lot to Orange County Public Schools. Thank you. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you. I too want to thank Orange County, the mayor, the sponsors for initiating this project, and I certainly want to congratulate the students, the principals, and the parents for their efforts and recognition. I think this county, Florida-wide, we don't have a water ethic. I think this is the beginning of how we reach new awareness on what water means to this state. People don't come here to look at the strip malls, they come here because of our sunshine and our waters. And, you know, there's already a lot of scientific research on how nutrient intrusion into our springs are really polluting the waters. You know, if you go up to Wakava Springs, it used to be crystal clear, and now there's this greenish tint. So I want to thank you all for your interest in doing it, and your commitment to putting these really informative and provocative artwork together. I think it's needed, and, you know, we have to take a step somewhere. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Well, behind every great artist is a great art teacher. Can I have our teacher stand and let us recognize you all as well? I know we have at least one out there. Thank you. And kids, before we let you go, because it is coming up on FCAT season, I know the board would like to shake all of the winners' hands, so if you all could sort of file by up front, well, we'd like to shake the winners, the student winner hands. All right, our second recognition tonight is for three schools: Edgewater High School, Howard Middle School, and South Creek Middle Schools. Well, principals Michelle Erickson from Edgewater, Carl Cartwright from Howard, and Stephanie Shames from South Creek, and the red ribbon teams, please stand and let us recognize you. Y'all could stay standing, we're going to brag on you a little bit here as well. Howard Middle School, South Creek Middle School, and Edgewater High School received the designation of becoming a red ribbon certified school in May of 2012. This is a distinguished achievement, shared with 16 other schools in Orange County and just 63 schools in the entire United States of America. The Center for Prevention Research at Florida State University assessed school performance in four areas: school environment, best practices in education, parent engagement, and substance abuse prevention activities. The red ribbon certification status celebrates success in these four areas. A red ribbon certified school is a school that is committed to implementing a strong underage drinking and drug prevention curriculum, and engages faculty, administration, students, parents, and members of the community in the prevention process. Schools must demonstrate a healthy school environment where the school leadership and administration engage in open and frequent communication, and continue to promote prevention in the school. Red ribbon certified schools must also use prevention-related curriculum guided by best practices, work with parents as partners, and engage in year-round red ribbon events. The red ribbon certified schools program was originally developed by Informed Families, the Florida Family Partnership, and the Florida Center for Prevention Research at Florida State University, and funded by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration and the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Please congratulate our newest red ribbon certified schools. And if I'd known that was that long, I would have had you sit. Thank you. You can just have a seat. Could we now have Ms. Christine Stillwell, Orlando Regional Director of Informed Families, the Florida Family Partnership, step to the podium, along with Carol Burkett, the Drug-Free Office of Orange County, and they are going to hand a memento to each principal and team members that have achieved this status of a red ribbon school.
Thank you. This is our favorite part of the process of recognition for all the hard work the schools have put into this. First, Edgewater High School and the red ribbon certified team, led by Principal Michelle Cartwright. We have a plaque. Erickson.
Ms. Stillwell, Ms. Erickson couldn't be with us this evening, so we have Ann Taylor from the PTSA, and our safe coordinator, whose name is?
Nate Moran.
Nate Moran.
There we go. Next, we'd like to recognize Howard Middle School and Dr. Cartwright and his team. And finally, South Creek Middle School with Dr. Shames and her team.
Congratulations to all of our red ribbon schools and principals, team members, and Ms. Stillwell and Ms. Warner, could you also please come to the podium? I know the board would like to shake each of y'all's hands as well.
That's right.
All right, we have a special order speaker tonight that I'd like to recognize at this time, Ms. Nancy Pelser Borowitz, our district media specialist, and it's in conjunction with a very special recognition and item on our consent agenda. Nancy, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Sublett and Dr. Jenkins and the school board, and for the audience's benefit, I do like to be called the library goddess. I know some of you do not know that, so I always like to make sure people know that. April is the proclamation for School Library Media Month. I will be reading that to you. Whereas, school library media programs are an important asset in the education of the youth of the state, and whereas, school library media programs significantly contribute to student achievement by providing instructional support, resources, and services, and whereas, school library media centers provide access to information in a variety of formats within the school, including access to digital resources beyond the classroom, which they're very definitely doing at Freedom Middle School. Whereas, learning to become effective users of information and ideas is essential as Florida's youth prepare for a future filled with challenges and change, and whereas, promoting competencies and using new and emerging technologies is an integral part of school library media programs, and whereas, school library media programs promote literacy and the enjoyment of reading, and whereas, library media specialists are instructional partners and consultants in the teaching and learning process, be it resolved that Orange County Public Schools does hereby proclaim April 2013 as School Library Media Month. There you go. As a thank you to our school board, and to our area superintendents, and to our chiefs over here, we like to give a little gift each year. The winner of the Sunshine State Book for Elementary and Middle School in 2012 was Out of My Mind by Sharon Draper, and the Teens Read winner was The Maze Runner by James Dashner, so you each get a copy of those books. And Mr. Perot behind me is the Director of Instructional Technology and Library Media, and Katie Lopez is the President of the Orange County Association of Educational Media Organization, so they have purchased these books for you. Sorry, we didn't have enough for the audience.
I love it. That's my favorite thing you did. There's another one. You guys got some? Got enough? You have enough?
And I personally wrap these ribbons around each of these books. It's very impressive, isn't it?
A yellow ribbon.
Some of them are blue.
Well, Ms. Pelser Borowitz, thank you so much. You know, I think I speak for the entire board. This is our favorite, really, it's about our only gift we get up here on the board, but it's our favorite gift, coming from within the system, so it's legal. But last year, I actually misplaced mine, and I had Ms. McGill track down the books, because I have three young children, and this is wonderful, so thank you for this, and thank you for everything that our librarians, media specialists, I guess we call them today, but our librarians do. And do we have any other librarians here today? And if so, can I have all our librarians?
Well, just Katie, I think, is here tonight. Yes.
We have one at the board.
Yes, we do.
Mrs. Gordon, you're a media specialist too, aren't you?
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Oh, she's in another county. Actually, there are many media specialists, they're up in a room, actually, they're in a training right now, there are some, but they could not, you know, leave the training to come here, and thank you for your continued support, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you for all you do for us.
Now, Mr. Chairman, we thank you all so very much. We really appreciate our librarians, and I want to say that this board really fights hard to get librarians, and what we learn in other districts, we try to bring it back to our system here, and we have become a better system because of the Destiny system that we have placed in, and some of the technology system with the supervisor working with other counties. And Fame is coming up, and generally, you know, I normally report back with Fame, which is the Librarian State Meeting, and there's never been a time that either Osceola or Orange, they do not, you know, they always come back and bring home the bacon, and one of the biggest things is the battle of the books, and that's done in both counties, and we're really excited about that. But my library tenure started in 1967, here in Orange County, and Dr. Poe and I graduated to become counselors in 1970, so we kind of, well, she wasn't in the '70s, I take that back, she came along in the '80s. But they moved the librarians, librarians were looked at as special people, and the superintendent at that time looked at the media specialist and asked us to move up and work with the governor, at that time Bob Graham, and asked us to become certified in guidance and counseling, so a lot of us left the, and they don't know the history, but I'm going to bring the older librarians back before this board in February and honor them, along with the original counselors, like Dr. Pope and several others, because I think we do not need to let our history die. But I am a certified librarian in Osceola, and I love doing that now, and I'm back as a librarian, because they needed help, and I'm there to help, so that's our history. But we thank the librarians of Orange County, and we thank their supervisor so much for picking up the helm and working with them, because when I came onboard, we didn't even have a supervisor, we didn't even have a resource teacher, and Mr. Blocker, we went to him and asked him about getting a particular, you know, getting people to help and get the librarians back on task. But one day, I'm going to surprise you with all of the librarians that have come through Orange County.
Please, please do, I'd love to, I'd love to meet them.
But thank you.
I have two favorite places in the world, libraries and airports.
That's right.
I just love libraries, and the thing that, not to sound like a Luddite, the thing that saddens me the most is with modern technology, and George, you're sort of in a contradictory position, but you see fewer and fewer books in libraries nowadays, and I love books, I'm a book fanatic, I buy a couple dozen every year.
But no, George, George needs to let you know, most of our libraries, the middle school, high school, we have over 13,000 to 16,000 books in our libraries, and the high schools have even more. So our books are not going to waste, it's not, nothing like curling up in a chair with the book. You can't really curl up with this.
Yeah, amen. I agree. Don't tell that to a 14-year-old, but I agree. All right, thank you, Ms. Pelser Borowitz.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, why don't we do this, let's, we're not going to go anywhere, but let's take a brief, one or two-minute recess, so I know our students have school tomorrow, and our teachers, and our red ribbon school honoree, so thank you again for everything you've done for us.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in, so you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at commoncoreworks.org.
Okay, let's go ahead and get into the business of our meeting. As everybody's settling in, y'all may have noticed, I always like to recognize it whenever we have scouts in the audience. We're joined by four scouts, three life scouts, which is no small accomplishment, and one star scout from Troop 48 out of Park Lake Presbyterian. Boys, stand up and let us recognize you. Thank you for coming down here. And I suspect the boys are working on their citizenship badge, because we rarely get people in here who just have a love of school board business. Welcome, guys. All right, let me make a couple of announcements. We would ask for the courtesy of the audience and board members, that everyone please silence your cell phones and pagers. Any individual who would like to address an item on the consent or non-consent agenda may do so by completing a yellow form that looks like this, that you can get from Ms. McGill up here at the board table, she is the lady to the far-left-hand side of the dais. I will call you to speak when the item you have signed up for is before the board. Our protocols are, you will have three minutes to address the board. We ask... protocols are, you will have three minutes to address the board. We ask that you abide by Robert's Rules of Order and keep it professional, as everybody always does. If you have any schedule constraints, please let us know, and we'll try to accommodate those. Do we have any newly-appointed administrators to recognize tonight? Dr. Jenkins? We do? Okay. Let's go right into that, and then we'll go from that into the adoption of the agenda.
I'm happy to share with you Goresha Galbraith, who is Senior Administrator for our Regional DA Model Grant, is now going to be Assistant Principal at Rolling Hills Elementary.
Thank you for this exciting opportunity to be the new Assistant Principal at Rolling Hills Elementary. I would like to thank the following people: Chairman Soblet, all honorary school board members, Superintendent Jenkins, Dr. Jara, Dr. Gordon, Dr. Fritzler, Dr. Williams, Dr. Lawson, Dr. Pope, Dr. Brown, Mrs. Miller, my new supervisor, Ms. Huff Robinson, my current supervisor, Ms. Schuler, Mrs. Harrelson, Mr. Arnold. I'm here tonight with my husband, Rohan, and my two sons, Dylan and Rohan Jr., my friend and colleague, Orlando Norwood, and my best friend, Precious Hill. I am going to utilize all my prior experiences as a teacher, curriculum resource teacher, and a district turnaround senior administrator to ensure that I assist the students, parents, and staff of Rolling Hills. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
I just want to tell you, congratulations, Ms. Galbraith. And I haven't had a chance to meet you personally, but I look forward to it. And I love coming out to visit my schools in Rolling Hills. It's one of my favorites. I'm hoping I can make it to your multicultural night Thursday night. So anyway, I just want to say congratulations, and I look forward to getting to know you better. Thank you.
Let me echo that, Ms. Galbraith. On behalf of the board, congratulations. I tell every newly-appointed administrator that more than anything else, your appointment as one of our administrators signifies trust. It means that we trust your judgment. It means we trust your educational leadership skills, and most importantly, it means that we trust you with our children. So congratulations. It's a great honor. And I meant to do that before I got into the business of the meeting. So if you and your husband and your boys would like to head on out, is that okay, Superintendent? You're really hers to dismiss, not mine, but thank you. All right, Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are, Mr. Chairman. Item 5.02 is being withdrawn due to the late request of a hearing. On item 504, I'm sorry, 505, we are moving to non-consent a student with initials M.A. from Olympia High School to non-consent. That would be non-consent item 1601. Chairman had previously indicated 1401 being moved to non-consent. That will not be moved. We will leave that on the consent agenda. And then we have three additional withdrawals. That is 1601, be brought back at a later date after the increased cost of contracted services based on recent quotes are dealt with. And then item 1402 and 1403, at the request of the other party's legal counsel, are withdrawn for further deliberation, and we will bring that back to you as well.
Okay. I find cause to amend the agenda as requested. Can I have a motion to do that? It's been moved by Mr. Roach, seconded by Mrs. Robinson. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the agenda amended. We are now on item 3.01, which is a public hearing on Board Policy ADD, bullying and harassment. Superintendent Jenkins or Mr. Rodriguez?
Board members, Mr. Chairman, I turn this over to Netarlene Fernandez, but this is a policy that's been previously advertised and workshopped, actually, a couple of times. It's now in its final form for review, and I don't know if you have any comment cards. Just keep that in mind.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the policy you do have before you, as Mr. Rodriguez had just stated, has come before you at several different work sessions. The changes that are being made to this policy are for clarification purposes and to conform it to our other policies that we have recently adopted. In addition, we have made changes that refer to which staff members and which departments within Orange County Public Schools will be taking care of the training piece for bullying and harassment at the school, for training for administrators, as well as training having to do with the disciplinary process.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Are there any questions on the proposed modifications to Board Policy ADD? Seeing none. I don't have any speaker cards on this agenda item. Are there any members of the audience who have come tonight to testify on Board Policy ADD, Agenda Item 3.01? Seeing none. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the changes. It's been moved by Vice Chair Moore to adopt the changes proposed, seconded by Mrs. Gordon. Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show those amendments done. We are now on Agenda Item 3.02, which is a targeted rezoning for Conway and Memorial Middle Schools. Superintendent Jenkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As have previously been workshopped with you, we are dealing with several rezonings. I will ask Ms. Simpson and staff to walk you through each of those, starting with item 3.02, and ending with item 3.05. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to introduce Dr. Carol McGowan and Brent Downs with me this evening. People Assignment has followed the school board zoning policy as we bring these targeted and technical rezonings before you tonight. Just as a quick reminder, we use the term "technical" when we are talking about any rezoning that is dealing with property that's totally uninhabited. There are no students involved. It's basically getting a piece of property zoned before there's any houses or anything there. These requests come to us from either developers sometimes, when they realize their property is split, or sometimes from our own Planning and Governmental Relations Department. When we do this, we follow the school board policy for advertising. A targeted rezoning has a limited number of students, and these typically come to us either from parents, or, again, sometimes a school board member, or sometimes governmental relations will let us know that we have a piece of property that's split between two zones. When we do this, when we also follow, obviously, the school board advertising policy, but we do go one step further, and we notify each family that could be impacted by sending them a letter. We do have the timeline in your packet. As we go forward, we have received no input on any of the technical rezonings that we have, but we do have a copy in front of you of the input that we've received on the targeted rezoning for the Southern Oaks area. We had received a petition after the Rule Development Work Session that had 310 signatures that represented 248 households who were supporting this rezoning of Southern Oaks area. We also received six emails late yesterday, and today we've received an additional, it says 42 on there, after this was printed, just before I came in, I received two more. So it's actually 44 emails, all supporting this rezoning. At this point in time, Dr. McGowan is going to take you through the targeted rezoning for Southern Oaks area.
Good evening. Good evening. This evening, we begin with a proposed targeted rezoning in the South Orlando area. Our first slide orients us to the general location of the area and the nearby middle schools. The green lines represent the current middle school lines. And as you can see, this area has a variety of middle schools, from Conway, Howard, Blankner, Memorial, and Walker, in the general vicinity. The area in yellow is the area that's up for discussion this evening. If we could go to the next slide. Our next slide shows us the area in close-up, and our next slide is the aerial view of this general section of the city that shows that this is a developed area. There are currently 33 Orange County Public Schools' middle students residing in this area. The area is currently zoned for Memorial Middle School, and if this rezoning is approved, the area would be moved to the Conway Middle School zone. If we could go to the next slide. If this rezoning occurs, this is what our new school zones would look like. The area in green would be the new Memorial Middle School zone, and the area in purple will be our new Conway Middle School zone. Mr. Soblet, we are concluding our presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McGowan. All right, board members. We did workshop on this previously, and I always feel compelled to say this to the audience at these hearings. If it seems like there's not a lot of questions, it's because this has already been extensively workshopped by this board before we got here tonight. Are there any questions from board members before I go to speakers? Okay, we do have one speaker on this proposed rezoning, Ms. Kristi Camera. Ms. Camera, welcome to the Orange County School Board. If you could, when you start, give us your name and your address, and three minutes to address the board. And welcome.
Kristi Camera. I live at 3238 North Glen Drive. Thank you, and I'm going to keep it brief, because I know I spoke to you in January, and I just want to say thank you very much to the board for taking this issue up on behalf of our community and indicating that you would support it. So we're very excited tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Conway community and the area Southern Oaks Home Owners Association. I'm president of 240 homes over there, and also president of Pershing Elementary School PTA. And we recognize this as a great move to make our public schools stronger in our area and to keep our community cohesive. So we thank you for bringing this up to a vote, and appreciate your time.
I always feel like a Grinch. I'm supposed to say no clapping, so if you all could do the hand thing. All right, I don't think I have any other speakers on this topic. At this time, board members, can I entertain a motion to adopt a proposed rezoning? It's been moved by Mr. Roach, seconded by Ms. Cadel. Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving item 3.02 on the agenda, the targeted rezoning for Conway Memorial Middle Schools, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Show that adopted unanimously.
Mr. Soblet, may I say a couple of words?
Mr. Roach, yes, sir.
First of all, I'd like to acknowledge our former City Commissioner, Don Ammerman. Down, you please raise your hand. Always like to acknowledge our fellow elected officials. Thank you for coming. And I just want to say thank you to the board. Thank you to the board, to the superintendent, for helping this move forward and for listening to the community. And in particular, I would like to, in particular, I'd like to acknowledge Mrs. Gordon for her vote on this issue very much, Kat. I appreciate that. And I'm very proud of you, and I'm happy, and I'm anxious to show, get a tour going here for the Conway Middle School area. So please call me so we can get that going after the F-Cat dust settles. And we'll go over there and take a look at it and show you a new facility that we're real proud of, too. And welcome, welcome to the middle school community.
All right. Well, at this time, if you all would like to leave, unless you have a passion for school board business, I will say one thing as you leave. We hope and expect to see you in Orange County Public Schools next fall. Thank you. All right, let's go on to 3.02. Ms. Simpson, who will be handling this one? Dr. McGowan, okay.
Yes, sir. The next proposed rezoning is a targeted rezoning in the Apopka area. For orientation purposes, our red lines are the current elementary school zone lines, and the area under discussion is here at the Apopka Boulevard and Lakeville Road. And our, up close of this, you can see the area under discussion for the Lake Pleasant Cove is here in the yellow, and this northern part of the subdivision would have 18 homes upon completion. The southern part of the subdivision is south of South Apopka Boulevard, and they currently attend Lakeville. The hash-marked area is areas that we are proposing to move so that our line becomes straight. If we look at our aerial view, the area in the triangle, as you can see, is primarily industrial commercial, and there are no students currently within this area. The hash-marked area here is, has one student, and the area in the yellow, in the part that of Lake Pleasant Cove, has two students at this point in time. The recommendation shows that we would take the two areas here, would become part of Lakeville, and the area in the top, which is currently part of Lakeville, would become part of Level, and this would be our new zone line. At our Rule Development Work Session, there was a question about distance from the hook to each of the schools, and we have measured that, and it's 1.4 miles from the entrance to the subdivision to Lakeville, and it is 1.6 miles to Level, doing the main roads going up. Mr. Soblet, that concludes our presentation.
All right. Thank you, Dr. McGowan. All right. Board members, any questions on this proposed targeted rezoning? Seeing none. Are there any members of the audience who have come tonight to speak on Agenda Item 3.03, the targeted rezoning for the northern section of the Lake Pleasant neighborhood? Seeing none. Board members, would somebody like to make a motion? It's been moved by Vice Chair Moore to adopt the proposed targeted rezoning at 3.03. It's been seconded by Ms. Cadel. Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Show that targeted rezoning, done. All right, Ms. Simpson, 3.04.
Mr. Downs is going to take the Lester Road area.
Thank you, Sandy. As reviewed before, the red lines on the map represent the current elementary school boundary lines, starting in the general area map presenting the technical rezoning for elementary schools with zones in the Lester Road area. You can see by the red lines, we have the zones for Wolf Lake Elementary School, Rock Springs Elementary School, Apopka, and also Dream Lake. The yellow area represents parcels in question along Lester Road. Zooming in, you can see the parcels are divided between Wolf Lake Elementary, Apopka, and Rock Springs. The hash-marked area has no students. It was simply included to make cleaner boundary lines. There are currently no students in that hashed area. This next map represents a general aerial view, where you can see that the yellow area is undeveloped. Pupil Assignment recommends rezoning the questioned area to Rock Springs Elementary School, and this map would show what the elementary schools would look like if this zone was adopted. Mr. Soblet, we are finished with this presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Downs. All right, board members, any questions on this proposed technical rezoning? Seeing none. Are there any members of the audience who have come to testify tonight on Agenda Item 3.04, the technical rezoning, Lester Road for Popka and Wolf Lake Middle Schools? Seeing none. Board members, motion to approve this technical rezoning, been moved by Ms. Flynn, seconded by Mr. Roach. Any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that technical rezoning, done. All right, 3.05.
This is Lester Road Middle School. Mr. Downs will take us through that one.
Once again, for orientation, the green line, solid green line you see there is the middle school boundary line between Apopka Middle School to the right and Wolf Lake Middle School to the left. The yellow area represents parcels in question along Lester Road. These are the same parcels as were shown with the middle school map. As you can see, it's divided between Wolf Lake Middle School and Apopka Middle School. Based on the generation rate, we are expecting about six middle school students in this area when developed, and there are currently no students at the middle school level in the hashed area. Again, this slide represents the general aerial view that shows there is no development in the yellow area. Pupil Assignment recommends rezoning the questioned area to Apopka Middle School. Pupil assignment recommends rezoning the questioned area to Apopka Middle School, and this map represents what the zones would look like with Apopka in green and Wolf Lake Middle in purple. Mr. Sublet, we are now finished with this presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Downs. All right, Board members, any questions on this proposed technical rezoning? Seeing none, is there any member of the audience who has shown up tonight to testify on Agenda Item 3.05, the technical rezoning between, for the line between Rock Springs Elementary and Apopka and Wolf Lake Elementary Schools? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve this technical rezoning? It's been moved by Mrs. Robinson, seconded by Vice Chair Moore. Is there any debate on that motion or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the technical rezoning reflected at Agenda Item 3.05, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that rezoning done. All right, Ms. Simpson, Mr. Downs, Dr. McGowan, thank you very much. All right, Board members, we are now on the consent agenda, I believe. Yes. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Mr. Roach.
Just a comment on 701 and 702, and I just wanted to talk about the, a little bit about the history of UCP charter schools, the beginning of UCP and how it's expanded, continues to serve a population that would be very difficult to us to serve. I was invited to be a guest, I don't know what you call it, Eileen, maybe a guest teacher or something. I teamed up with, we worked with, I don't know, six or seven kids for about 45 minutes, and I will tell you, I just totally fell in love with those kids. You know, at my age, I almost adopted a little redheaded boy. He was even just precious, but we had a great time with them. But it reminds me a lot of Eileen and watching her grow with these schools. I swear, I'm just hoping the board will approve this consent agenda tonight and let this lady continue to serve our children. So I'm pulling for you, Eileen. Hope it comes through.
Well, I'll just say amen, amen, amen. You do God's work at your schools, Eileen, so thank you, and you do a wonderful job at the work you all do for our students. Thank you. All right, any other comments on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve it?
Move the approval.
Moved by Mrs. Gordon, seconded by Mr. Roach. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. We are now on, any attorney report? Mr. Rodriguez?
Don't have a report.
Yeah, Mr. Rodriguez. Yeah, Board members, I left the capacity enhancement issue on consent. Yeah. Mr. Rodriguez.
Board members, I don't have a report, other than, I think I've met with you already, and you'll be receiving some information on Agenda Item for the next board meeting. So, other than that, nothing at this time.
Okay. Superintendent.
Briefly, Board members, yesterday I did attend a meeting with four other superintendents and Department of Education staff in Tampa discussing, and the meeting was announced it was to discuss possible Plan B for our evaluation system should Park have any unforeseen delays in being ready for release in 2014-15. I expect early April, there will be some recommendation brought by the Commissioner to the legislators and to the State Board of Education for that alternative, and so we were certainly pleased to be a part of that discussion. Let me just, at least for background purposes, remind you that as we convert our curriculum to Common Core state standards, FCAT 2.0 would no longer be a valid assessment of student learning in 2014-15 if those items remain on the current path and the projected timeline that has been provided. I do believe, I'm very hopeful, that we may still get the legislature to consider delaying for a year part of 736 that will tie teacher performance pay to those indicators. I'm still very hopeful for that. The issue with the Park examination, should there be any delay, is that you will have converted and moved all of your teachers and students to a new curriculum, different benchmarks, different standards, if you will, and that we will have to have a matching assessment at that point for 2014-15. And so we looked at some creative alternatives, Plan Bs are what they're being called throughout the nation, as other states as well realize that they have to have an ulterior, an alternate plan, I'm sorry, if Park happens to not make it in time for the 14-15 timeline. So we were pleased to be a part of that discussion. Superintendent from Pinellas, Miami Dade, Duval, and Escambu, we're also in that meeting. We are, we feel somewhat more comfortable that the state will have a backup plan that will be feasible for our students and for our teachers, and fair as well, so we'll keep you posted on that.
Ms. Moore.
Dr. Jenkins, that was a very significant conversation, so I'm just trying to digest what you said. If you could explain to me one more time what meeting you were at, and then, we'd had a communications meeting, which I'm going to refer to later in my report. So help me understand, then, if you think legislatively there's some traction in Tallahassee to delay Park, and then, again, implementation of Park, and Joey's shaking her head at me, so that's why, you could see I needed clarification. You know, what that means in the big picture with going to digital and implementation of 736 with the teacher performance, if you could explain that one more time, please.
I'm happy to. I want to keep two items separate. So if you think of Common Core state standards being implemented, by 2014, we are gradually moving, so we'll have K-12 implementation of changing the curriculum, the standards that we have our teachers preparing our students for. By 2014-15 is the date that we are also supposed to change from FCAT to a new evaluation. So you change the order and the kind of instruction you expect, then the evaluation is to change as well. It will be something called Park correlated to Common Core state standards. A Plan B, the Commissioner has spoken of on more than one occasion, a Plan B needs to be in place because if you converted your curriculum, you can't still administer FCAT 2.0 as the assessment of the curriculum, the two won't match. And so a Plan B is being prepared so that we, as other states are working on the same, will have an alternative if Park, through its national consortium, driven at a national level, in case it's not ready in time. That's really the issue that was at hand yesterday for the discussion. We are still hopeful that the actual pay for performance, there's drafted legislation that the actual tying of teacher pay to the outcomes of whatever assessment is in place can still be nudged forward by another year, just so we have more time to prepare for it. And so we've had some traction, we've had some interest. We're very hopeful that that can still be pushed back an additional year, but the assessment has to be aligned for Common Core.
Okay, so then, in terms of the devices and the technology that is needed, district-wide, we could still be trying to move in that direction regardless of what assessment tool is used, and we would move ahead, second part of that, we would still move ahead with the Common Core standards regardless of which assessment tool they're going to use. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Superintendent, this question's probably out of left field, but I was reading Education Week the other day, and I didn't realize that there was a multi-state effort going on as well to have a common ELL curriculum for large ELL learner states, and we're one of five states in the article, it's about California pulling out with common curriculum, common testing, common determination, when a student should proficient out of ELL. What's the timing on that? Do you know? I mean, is that just sort of a work in progress, or is there a target date on all that?
I don't know that. I'd certainly be happy to get it for you. I'd rather not guess at it.
Okay. I just, I didn't even know that was going on. It sounds like you did, but I thought that was interesting. Yeah. Okay. Committee reports. Communications. Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chair, we did have a meeting on Tuesday with regard to spring communications, and we certainly were looking at the calendar of all of this and the move ahead in terms of with technology and looking at potential groups that would be appropriate to hear the message so they understood the changes that were coming. I have a, beginning of a spreadsheet, I'm going to have it completely finished as an example, but Ms. McGill has scheduled some meetings with those of you that did not make the communications meeting because it really is going to require all of us to be engaged in the process. So I'll be meeting with you all, I know she was noticing the meeting, so that we can have that conversation with everyone. And then, once we have that, I will set a time that we can try to finish up all of the communications of the groups that we think are significant in our representative districts. It is putting together a grid of communications dealing with the move with technology and Common Core. Yes. All right, then, on another subject, I just wanted to give the board a report back on the Fourth Annual Popkarts and Jazz Festival, which was on March 2nd, hence why I wore my wonderful jazz outfit today. I had a more calm and tame outfit, Mrs. Gordon, but the weather precluded my wearing that particular outfit, and I had to quickly change since the weathers were about, temperatures were about 40 and 50, and the wind, I think, was about 35 miles an hour. So, other than, the bad news was a lot of our booths blew down by two or three, but I spoke to Bridgewater, and she said she made it to 330. So it really depended on how many paper clips you brought and water jugs to tie down your art boards, and then I had dreams in the middle of the night about having school buses and garbage trucks up there to block the wind, and I was told that that wasn't such a crazy idea. So we're not really sure, Dr. Williams and Dr. Gordon, you know, of course, the year we had it with you, Dr. Pope, the wind wasn't so bad, but now we're two years in a row with horrible winds. So that's a challenge. But in spite of that, I have good news, in spite of the weather, and when you see the pictures, you'll see our little darlings in coats because it was rather cold, and the girls from Apopka High School, though, had those bareback dresses, and they knew the show had to go on, and they managed to weather not having the jacket on for their 10 minutes of singing. But in spite of the worst weather of the year, in the north learning community where we've had, this would be the fourth year for the event, they doubled their ticket sales. So they had gone from 1,000 tickets sold last year to 2,000 this year, and I was incredibly pleased with the West under Dr. Williams and Mr. Moody's leadership. They sold 1,000 for their first year, which is really tremendous, and there was about another 1,000 sold at the door. So that was 4,000 tickets sold, and we had over 1,000 performers, and between the volunteers at 250 and the art students, we really have to guess at that particular number. That's the only one we really have to guess. That was 5,500 people. So we're absolutely thrilled about that turnout that they actually showed up in the cold and the wind. And in terms of funding, last year, we had bottomed out the third year, about just under $20,000 raised, and remember, all the money goes back to the schools for their art and music supplies. So I added it all up, and we actually exceeded 30,000 this year. So it was more than a 50% increase for the arts in the school. So I think if the weather will cooperate a little bit better next year, we'll continue to increase, but I'm not sure about us handling any more schools. 30 schools was quite a challenge, so, but thank you for all of your support. Yes, Dr. Jenkins got out there for the day, and...
Show them what you wore on your head.
No, I left it in my office because Mrs. Cadel did not approve, but, you know, do you want me to stand up? I really did wear this the whole day, so you could see me from miles away. So that was, and the yellow shoes.
We love it. It's all about art and music.
And she had something growing out of her head that blew it off.
Mrs. Cadel would not let me wear my little orange bow and...
Flower.
Flower. And at one point, it took off like a frisbee into the crowd, and so I actually, Mrs. Cadel did not have it on very long because the wind just did not cooperate. But we were thankful for a dressing room with coffee and, yes, that was heated. And I got to tell you, Scott Evans and the whole crew, we never ran more than one or two minutes behind or one or two minutes ahead with over 40 performing groups all day. And I had one other little thing, I never told them that the Wakava FFA, you know, was going to bring animals. So we had, you know, a petting zoo with animals and a real petting zoo, and they were incredibly popular, and I was glad for that because the instruments and the animals did not blow away like the art booths. At least there was something left for the children later in the day. So thank you for all your support.
And if you want to see the whole outfit, there is a picture of her in the middle of the Apopka Chief front page with the thing growing out of the top of her head.
I'm just looking at Mr. Roach, smiling, thinking, thank God I have one other man on the board.
You woke me up, Mr. Sublet.
Because otherwise, you know, I wouldn't be able to talk fashion at all. Now, congratulations and kudo, Ms. Moore, because I know how hard you work on that, and that's all your baby, and you created that. That's incredible. I was going to actually come out, but I froze at a track meet at Lake Brantley that went on, learning track meets last about six hours, you know, and it was freezing that day.
How long does your child run?
Yeah, she runs all of them, about 45 seconds, and you're out there for six hours.
I had one of those. We were there for three hours, and he ran all three of his heats. He ran a total of less than a minute.
Really? Wow.
Oh, yeah.
You've been there. You've been there.
Oh, yeah, it's fun.
All right, Community Action Board, Mrs. Gordon.
Just a comment on that, Mr. Sublet.
Yes, Mr. Roach, I'm sorry.
I rang my bell there, but I just wanted to, I don't think I've said it publicly, but commend Mrs. Moore for her work. I know we all have said something to her, but I think that as a new board member four years ago, that was nothing but an idea in your head. It's just an idea, and you took it, you spread it, you built it, and each year, I hear you piling on with success on that, and this year was just phenomenal. So I just want to tell you, I think it's just tremendous, and I know other board members have their pet projects in their areas. Mrs. Gordon does a wonderful thing, Mrs. Cadel has, you know, it's good, but it's nice to see you doing it. You're a new board member, you've made your mark, that'll, you know, that'll be, you'll be a legend in your own mind, I mean, time, you know, someday. Way to go, Christine, really. I'm very proud of you.
Well, I love that, a legend in your own time, I'm telling you. Okay, all righty. I continue to really marvel at the partnership between the Orange County Public Schools and Orange County Government under the leadership of our county mayor, Teresa Jacobs. There is a Family Services Division, and it's, well, it's a Family Service Department, and it, under that department is a Community Action Division, and it has really been a very strong, the Board of Orange County has had a very strong relationship with them because, as I stated earlier, their leadership ability to be able to get together and collaborate and team up with the Orange County Public School staff, and the competition that I see there and the camaraderie ship, my part that it just excite me, we talk about the GEDs, and I always talk about Mr. Roach because that's one of his major areas of concern also, as well as mine, as well as the other board members. But to be able to see the GEDs and academic careers related vocation that enhance, and it's poor families that they are dealing with, and it really amazes me. My report is written in 1901 and board-doced, and you could find that in the agenda. But I wanted to highlight a couple of areas. They generally work out of the community centers, and, you know, if you don't know which centers are yours, it's almost hard to keep up with them because some of us have several of the centers in our area, but every now and then, they ask that the board members visit, and they ask that we do that. The Community Action Board, they have been very supportive of our school, the welcome back, and so many other areas. The John Bridges Center up in Apopka, I can't begin to tell you about the partnership there, and not only that, but the ministers that are involved with the county mayor and the Family Service Department. They sponsor College Day, they don't just deal with the low income or trying to get everybody with the GED. The Bridges Center, along with other centers, have worked on college fair, and they did a big college fair on February the 16th. I can go on and on, but the other districts that I, over 200 people received vocational training, and this is through our vocational and technical school that they are working together. We get a lot of money from the county, and I think that one day, well, we've welcomed them, and I think we've honored them, but I don't think we've honored them collectively as a board. I believe that, you know... I believe that, you know, each one of us, our district. But I don't realize, I don't think you realize what a large portion of the budget we are to educate people within these districts, but over two hundred people receive vocational training, GED, post-secondary, and educational counseling. I just, I just think that's unbelievable. And then they, they receive, which, when you get your general diploma, they have classes going. These people are dedicating themselves from five-thirty in the evening until eight-thirty and nine o'clock at night, trying to make something out of themselves and, you know, share educational opportunity. And because of Dr. Jenkins carrying on the legacy of Mr. Blocker with the involvement there, we were totally involved with Head Start. And then that pulled out a little bit, but they, we still work with them. But I'm telling you about the general education diploma and the college programs are just overwhelming and the educational opportunity that are given at these centers. They pick up all kinds of information. They have about six goal areas that they work with. They will send you off to college. You've, I've invited on two or three occasions our success stories from the Community Action Board. I've invited them here. But you have Willow Street Community Center with Christine. You have TAV Community Center with Rick Roach, Southwest with myself, Pine Hills with Pam Ghul, Nancy Robinson and myself, the Maxi Center, which is Christine and Pam, Lila Mitchell, myself, John Bridges again with Christine. So it pretty much works as we are not only at this board table, but we are out there, the Holden Heights Community and the Halpe Marston, and then with Joey Cadel and Darryl, the East Orange. They are very, very active. Another part, when you go into the report, there's an attachment. There's something that calls CSBG, and I know that our chairman is very familiar with that because he pumped the money back and helped us on that a lot of times when he was up in the legislature and how things come back into the community. But that Community Service Block Grant Program, we get a big portion of that, and I always have Mel to show you how much we at Orange County Public School receive and how much our families receive. So I would maybe like to see us, you know, recognize at least the Family Service Department, and it could be the Community Action Board, but I don't think we've ever recognized the Family Service Department. We gain a lot, and I think Dr. Dear, she gets to work with them, but it just makes me feel so good to know that people in our community are getting better. It's a lot of work, and you have to meet. When I cannot be there, and it's Wednesday in the day, Hudy Stone has taken that position and has always, since Linda Sutherland have been on the school board, Hudy has always asked, could she be the second representative? It could be a board member, but she has always asked to follow in a second person. I can only make the ones in the evening, but she generally makes the one in the daytime, and I'm very appreciative of that, and I wanted the board to know that. So, Mr. Chairman and to board members and to the superintendent, Area Soup, our General Counsel, that is our report, and I'm very proud to present that to you, and I'm so happy to know that we have thousands and thousands of dollars coming in from Orange County Government Family Services Department for our families in Orange County. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. We'll tee them up for recognition at one board meeting. We'll invite them here. Ms. Moore.
Mrs. Gordon, I really appreciate your service on the Community Action Board. I had two questions now after the comment you just made. What time on Wednesday is your meeting?
The meeting's on Wednesday, very, and it's generally like ten o'clock in the morning, and it's at the, on Michigan.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, I'd be curious maybe to attend one time since I have three, but...
What I will do, I'll ask, I'll have Deborah McGill to have Mel to put on the daytime meetings because I know it's easier for you all for daytime, and it's better for me in the evening. I'll have them to put a schedule in because it will be great to see, especially if you can go to the workshops.
No, it'd be great. And the reason, I had a question for you because of, with the issue with the technology and all the digital instruction we're moving into, you know, I was curious about the amount of funding that was available and if there's any impetus to have additional technology and opportunities for our families and the communities if they do not have that at home, if the Community Action Centers were looking towards having iPads and desktop computers and laptops.
Very good question, and I think I could direct that to Dr. Dear and to see how they are doing and pulling that together because the technology they're using now is with our, with the evening programs that they are utilizing. And they're trying to get computers into the school. DeVry, along with Congresswoman Corrine Brown's office, had donated to all of our community centers, and Dr. Lawson worked extremely hard with me, with Dr. Bridget Williams, when she was principal of Jones, to make sure that two of our community centers had technology. And I think it was DeVry University that provided those, the technology for us, but it's outdated. And then there were churches that provided, and this is, these are our children. These are Orange County Public School children that they're providing for. So I did not see any money there for use for that, other than what I see them doing in the GED program and getting that degree. And you could correct me, Dr. Dear, if I missed on that.
We're getting some more equipment, some brands, and we just ordered another lab that we need, so.
Okay.
We're trying to...
All right. Very good question, and I'll bring that back to the board. I'll take that back, and thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dear. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Ms. Flynn, you don't have to. Do you want to say anything on great city schools?
Just a little bit.
Yeah, I'd love to hear personally.
Now, you got me geared up. The Council of Great City Schools is an organization made up of fewer than one hundred of the large urban school districts. You have to sort, you have to, not sort of, you have to meet a certain criteria. There are a lot of other districts that want to get in, but either they don't meet the urban aspect or the size aspect, they have to. And so this organization does a lot of lobbying on behalf of public education, a lot of research. But I attended the board meeting in place of you, Mr. Chair, and, yes, and it was very interesting. I'm going to give you just about three things that the board talked about. It was a three-hour meeting, but the three items, I think, are the most pertinent right here. And also then, Mr. Roach and Mrs. Cadel, they were there with me, and they can both give you their viewpoints on the speakers that we heard. But in the board meeting, there was a lot of concern expressed about political churning and how just the political attacks on public education is really often overwhelming and debilitating and really a deterrent for letting educators do what they must. So there was a lot of talk about that and getting the message out about the achievements of public education. There was concern, like we've expressed, about Common Core and how, and Mr. Roach can even go into further depth about that, but about how Common Core is going to show some declines and what that message and how we're going to message it to the community. In regard to the Common Core, there was some questions that, is it aligned with everybody's curriculum? And there was talk about, this was actually from one of the other board members. They were advocating having a third-party, non-biased party looking out, looking out for public education so that we'll be buying, we won't be buying some of the old, the old stuff, I guess, and books and everything. And Mike Casserly, who's the executive director, said that the council was designing some rubrics to measure against the Common Core. Certainly, it's something we could use, but maybe other districts need it more. He said there was also enormous uncertainty on how states were going to handle the Common Core regarding proficiency, cut scores, and that type of thing. He said, "We shouldn't look at 2015 as the end, but the beginning of a tenure process when we start the Common Core, and we have a huge messaging issue about the progress we're making, and this confusion in the transition period could be used by the non-public school enthusiast." It was, you know, very much like what we were talking about. So there was that issue. The other issue was in response to the possible loss of dollars by the sequestration for fiscal year 2013 in Title I and the IDEA grant, they were asking the districts to let the council know of any cuts, when, if, and how many. They're trying to get an idea of how that's going to affect the district. So for the superintendent, I'd ask that if we have any kind of information on that, when we do, to let them know. Let's see. They also are coming out with some public service announcements. They really talked about how public service announcements often are played at times that, you know, the general public just, they're not up at three o'clock in the morning to see this. So they're looking at possibly doing some, they were doing some prototype in different communities, but those are available to us if we want to go to our TV stations and news outlets to see if they'll play them, and possibly that's something that our communications department can do. So there's a few other things. I'll type them up and send around, but that was the core of the, of the board meeting that I thought would interest everybody else.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Flynn, and thank you for going in my stead. I hated missing that because I loved that conference.
I know you do, but I'm so glad I was able to do it because it was a great conference, and thank you for letting me sit in your place.
Great to have you.
Okay.
All right.
Either Mr. Roach or...
No, I just, I just, she wrapped it up beautifully. I would just say that on the positive side, it's, first of all, I've been back for a while. I think it's only my third trip up there in all my tenure. But I, I know why you like that because it's very intimate. I mean, all your large districts are representative, but when we had Secretary Duncan in the room, I looked around, there's only seventy or eighty of us. So we had a very, very positive talk with Arnie Duncan where you could actually ask questions. He only spoke a short time, and he opened it up for many questions. I asked him one, and several other people did too. The other positive was, of course, the large district representation. When people stood up and talked, you knew you were listening to people that were a lot like us, and I thought it was very well done. I, I came home probably very troubled, and I'm going to try to be a good boy here today and not get real, real deep into it, but the questions that I asked both Arnie Duncan and then the next day, I think they were the aides of the congressmen and senators on the education committees were up there talking primarily about the Common Core and the park and the assessment and what have you. I have to tell you, on both occasions where I asked questions, I did not get a straight answer. And I, it wasn't me. Thank God, Ms. Flynn, Ms. Cadel was there because they told me I wasn't crazy, and several people said they didn't ask, they didn't answer your question. Which leads me to the, maybe, maybe unfair opinion that they really didn't know the answer to it. So I'm, I get a little concerned about the direction of our board, which is going to go, is going to follow the federal law. But every time I talked about federal law, Mrs. Cadel had a nice, the feds, all of a sudden, after they're telling us everything that their senators are doing, saying that it's state-sponsored. So it's almost like they're, it's like, well, the state's not here, so I can't, but, but my concern is this, and that is, my biggest concern is that we are going to have to deal with approximately a thirty-eight percent pass rate on the park when it comes. This school district and our philanthropic strategic plan, which I see as investors who want to see return on investment, we're going to have to really explain unless Orange County and Dr. Jenkins can figure out a way to double that. Seems to me a thirty-eight percent is going to be a pretty strong score, and we've got to tell people that that's pretty much the way it is. And I, and when I, when I ask about that, there was a plea from the leadership, especially Secretary Duncan, who said, "This is going to take three or four years," and then the number ten years came out to really get through this. And that concerns me because no matter how good the Common Core is or how effective we may think the park is, the public is going to have a tough time swallowing that. And I appreciated the San Diego superintendent who stood up and said, "We're going to have a huge messaging problem." Of course, the response was, "We were going, we'll help you manage the message problem." And I can't even imagine how that would, how that would work. So, there we go. I asked these, the senators' aides, I simply asked them because they came up and they were really touting the research that their bosses like to have, and they really depended on research. So I asked them where the research was on the Common Core, if they had that. And I, and I followed it with a question on, "Do you have the research on the effectiveness of the park as an assessment? And do you have any research that shows that tying teachers' evaluations to pay and test scores have any kind of success?" And the pause you hear now is the pause I heard there. None of the four could answer the question. And then I had a gentleman speak to me at the break who simply came up and said, "There is no research on it. There's, the park hasn't even been designed yet." So in my mind, as an educator, I'm looking at, we're going to be following a curriculum that sounds pretty good. You can get people kind of excited about going deep and less standards and, but if it's not measured in a way that is equitable to teachers, and if teachers can't see where they're aiming and they're pretty, they're pretty accurate with their thirty-eight percent pass rate, then I see a huge setup for confusion, mass confusion. It's taken ten to twelve years to explain to part of the public about FCAT scores and why we still have fifty and sixty percent of our kids failing our tests. So I can't even imagine what the impact of the park would be unless they've got some cool way to figure it out. So I was troubled by the lack of clarity on the answers that I asked, and I don't know how other board members feel. I think I just, I don't know how to explain it. So I continue to wait. I read everything I can read. I talk to everybody I can talk to to try to get a good estimate, good and bad, of this park and where we're going and how it's going to fold out. But we're just a year and a half away from that, if they follow through with it. In the meantime, we've got our problems with just FCAT scores coming out, and the consequences go for that. So that was mine, and I'm sorry to put a little damper on the whole, whole thing. I wish I could tell you it was, it was clear, and I've got confidence, but right now, I don't have a lot of confidence in the leadership because I don't think anybody gave me any straight answers. And, Ms. Cadel, could you confirm that? Is that pretty much true? I don't think you got any either, did you? Okay.
A couple of things. There was a lot of talk about pre-K. I mean, everybody who came to talk to us from Arnie Duncan's office talked a lot about pre-K, and, you know, we probably don't realize how fortunate we are in Florida that at least we have a pre-K program, although all of our children do not get to participate in it. At least we have a program. It sounded like a lot of states don't have programs. There sounds like there's a lot of turf guarding between, I think it's Health and Human Services that has Head Start underneath it, and they're afraid the money's going to come from them and go to, go to education. So there was, you know, just all of this. And they just kept saying that Health and Human Services and DOE are working on it, but they feel like to close the gap, we've got to get the children in pre-K programs because the gap is so big when they come into kindergarten. So there was a lot of talk about that. There was a lot of talk, there was, there was talk, and Mr. Eugene, I believe, that we are hosting the COOs here in Orlando. The Council of Great City Schools does, I guess it's job-alike shares or whatever, so like the curriculum people get together, the operating officers. And they announced that not only are the operating officers getting together, but, Mr. Eugene, it's food and nutrition and maybe transportation. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And facilities?
And security.
And security. And so, you know, that, the council was really excited that they're going to have these, these great minds together to solve some of the problems we're dealing with. We also heard from the Department of Justice and the DOE person on school security. So there was a lot of talk about that and maybe what that would look like, and there's a handout that I brought back that I think I sent to Mr. Eugene today. So there was a lot of information, and I'll tell you, the briefing book that you get, the legislative briefing book that you get, is worth the trip. It has great information, lot of concern about E-Rate and what they're going to be doing with it and will they take that opportunity away. That was one of the things that, it was kind of like a call to action to make sure you let, you let your representatives know how important E-Rate is for our children of need because that's the way a lot of our Title I schools get their bandwidth for the internet is through E-Rate. So it was, it was a good conference, but there was a lot of, you know, it's not our, it's not our responsibility, it's their responsibility, or it's their responsibility and not ours. And so, you know, we just kind of left there going, "Oh, okay. Well, now we know why nothing happens in Washington because nobody owns anything."
Ms. Flynn.
I just wanted to dovetail on what Mr. Roach and Ms. Cadel were talking about. When we listened to the congressional aides, it was in regard to reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which was supposed to be reauthorized in 2007. And the long and short was that we really don't expect to see any authorization because there's just like no work done on it. But when you, but there was a lot of express support for teacher evaluations. You know, we, our chairman still wants teacher evaluations, but then when you ask them information about those evaluations, they said, "Well, we can't, we are banned from talking about curriculum, and if Park hasn't communicated with you about their tests, then you need to reach out to them." Those are my notes that I had. And so they certainly are supporting one action here on one hand and just sort of letting it drop. And they talked about with NCBI, there was overregulation from the federal sides, so now they're kicking it over to the state side, and we're just in a morass. It's like a black hole. So that's where the frustration came because you, we did, there were specific questions asked, and nobody gave, gave any kind of distinct or clear response. It was mostly conversation. Conversation needs to be this, the conversation. And so they're having a lot of conversations up there. And no, and no action. So thank you.
Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to ask Dr. Jenkins, I know you just heard all this conversation coming out of Washington, and yet we had this, my question to you earlier about park exams. Do you have any thoughts in summation, you know, so that we don't leave on a negative note, but I'm sure you've been dealing, dealing with this and have some thoughts in terms of how we move forward regardless of the morass that we have in Washington.
I do. A couple of things are fairly clear to me. I'm not so certain that the gentleman from Pearson or the gentleman who made the comment that Park hadn't been designed yet was quite accurate. Park is in design. The concern is whether or not it will meet the deadline. So there are already tests, questions, and some things to be at least piloted and prepared, but they've got until 2014-15, this group. So wouldn't so much say that it's not in design. What we heard yesterday is that there might be some concern as to whether or not it meets the deadline of 2014-15 school year, which is why most, several states are coming up at least with a Plan B. I think all of that being said, there are a few things we can count on, some things we can't control. And so when we hear the detail, it's one of the reasons, I neglected to mention it earlier, it's one of the reasons why we have not done, actually provided an impact study on some of the potential impact that Seminole County did because all of these decisions haven't been made, the rules haven't been set in place, there are still hearings going on, and we didn't feel a need to immediately set principals and teachers into panic and frustration right on the brink of our FCAT testing season. What we try to do, though, in order to manage the message, some things we won't be able to control. What we can control is our attitude and our work toward what is provided to us, whether we can change it or not. I don't mean to imply that we don't voice our concerns. That's certainly expected as well. But I believe our teachers and our principals will work hard with the new Common Core adoption and with the assessment that is supposed to match that adoption. And I believe, I could be foolish, but I believe the state of Florida is going to have to have certain stopgap measures in place. So I don't believe they would allow something to happen where the entire state and every school is graded as a D or an F. And so whatever local control at the state level is in their hands, I am confident there'll be some adjustment and some maneuvering to make certain that we don't have anything more than D and F schools throughout the state. What's disturbing about the simulation run in Seminole County is that you may actually say some teachers and principals are unsatisfactory when the school has been at an A or a B level. That's contradictory. And so there's work to be done. What we're asking our teachers and our staff to do in the meantime is to stay hard at work on the curriculum and the standards that are before us and helping make sure our students are prepared for whatever assessments might come before them. And so I have confidence in our staff. Our teachers are tremendous. Our principals, our instructional leadership team here at the district office, we're going to work with what's handed to us. Mind you, we don't mind voicing our concerns over some of that conversation that's going on, but we have to remain positive for our students and for our teachers to get the job done of educating our students.
Mrs. Gordon.
This is just a reminder that I would like to make sure that we don't let fall up under the bus. And I had mentioned, I think in a work session a couple of weeks ago in reference to the laws and policies and possibly if there's a bill governing the clarification of the hazardous busing. And I spoke with two state representatives that had looked into it, and the reason why I did it because when I talked with former state senator Simpkins, he said that we kind of dropped the ball. There were a lot of things we could have done for parents. And I know with the new theme that we have accelerating the momentum and moving forward, I don't want people to think that we're the ones because when people didn't like what we did with hazardous busing, they took it to the state. And then the state sent them back to the board, and they said that we had the right to make judgment. So I did want, I had asked to see if there's any way that they could revisit and look at that law. And when I spoke with two longtime state representatives, they told me that nobody has ever looked at it. Nobody has really questioned it. They pretty much left it up to the school board. So I would like for us as a board to follow up on that, to see where we stand with it and is it a way that they can revisit hazardous busing and then with the safety of the children. When that law was passed, when we all sat down together, we stated when the law had passed, you didn't have four, six, eight-lane roads. And we're still governing ourselves by laws and policies and possibly a bill and reference to that. So revisiting means a lot. And then I would like for us to look into, because people in my district are asking, and they came up at the meeting the other night at Washington Shores, they were concerned about the kids crossing Golden and coming off of Mabel Butler Boulevard across Columbia and then Bruton Boulevard. And they were concerned about that. And the Carver students crossing Raleigh where it's not that wide, but it's very dangerous. So I also wanted to see, Mr. Chairman, if we could look into clearly stating who has the power in the jurisdiction. The DOE say one thing and we follow it, but when parents go to Tallahassee, they say, "Well, your school board has the power." And I've had to deal with that quite a bit this year. You talked about the cost that was incurred, and the state does not give us that much. I'm wondering if there's any way that we can ask. And one of the state reps said he's going to try to get with Bryant Nelson and see before he comes out if there's some kind of way that we can ask about the state incurring the cost of the hazardous transportation and just seeing what we could do in that endeavor. So those are my major concerns, and I really would like to fight them. As our roads get wider and larger, this law, these policies were passed way back a long time ago. So I'm very concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Well, I will put it on our list of things to circle back to and to address. All right. Board members under 20, any other discussion items that you'd like us to calendar for future meetings? All right. I've handed out the work session schedule. Everybody have a great spring break. We don't have, I don't think we have anything before then because of absences. And we're coming back, and we're doing counseling and mental health and the naming issues coming back. And then we're getting to the all-important facilities condition assessment and also CATE, digital instructional technology in April. And then we have our budget meeting coming up as well here in April somewhere. There we go. I'm sorry, May 2nd. Okay? And then we have some other work sessions we still need to add, so it's going to be a busy walk to the finish. Also, just as an FYI, I've handed out, if you're bored tonight before you go to bed, I want to read this. There was a great Wall Street Journal article that came out about a week ago, and it was about Newark schools and how they get so much, because they've been a national poster child for, with Facebook's donation and others. But the whole theme of this article is how they need a strategic approach to their philanthropic efforts. So I read this, and I thought of us, and it's like, wow, okay, that's validation. And by the way, that is coming up on April 9th. You all will all get invitations, hope all the board members that can, can make that. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? With that, words earned. That was a good meeting.